Welcome everyone. My name is Thais Chanman and I am the CEO of Ethos Education Group and the moderator for the March Town Hall. And you know, just a little bit about Ethos and it is a character development program that was designed to improve the educational experience of students by defining success through a firm understanding of identity and self-value. And this program is, you know, through this program, students are really able to achieve generational change by redefining their success through increased self-value and character enhancement. And when I think about, you know, the work that this organization does and just the, the reach that we have with children from elementary through high school and we have alums, really, I would say a life-changing experience. And it really makes our kids really stop and think about their identity, their purpose, their values, and really think about their, their futures in a different way. And we're supported by champions, you know, from both entertainment to athletes to corporate to come back and really share their stories and experiences and serve as mentors to these kids. So I'll tell you a little bit more at the end, but you know, it's a little bit about Ethos. For this month, you know, we have our town halls every month and this month is a special month. We are speaking about the topic of women and leadership. And the primary reason is, for those of you who don't know, that International Women's Day was March 8th and it's a global holiday that celebrate, that's celebrated annually to really commemorate cultural, political, and socioeconomic achievements of women. And every year they have a theme and this year's theme was gender equality today for a sustainable tomorrow. And many of you, if you're like on LinkedIn or anything like that, may have seen hashtag break the bias. So in honor of that, we have this panel of amazing women. And I think that, you know, for those of you that have known me or just heard me speak before, it's like, you know, these stories, stories are powerful and so I'm really excited to have this conversation tonight with these women. And they're going to share a little bit about themselves, talk about their journeys and path and leadership. I just really give a lot more insight to the things that really help to guide them both personally and professionally. And you know, we'll kind of end with, you know, some, some words of wisdom, some advice for our future generations. But as I always say, in order to get things started, we always really need to bring every voice into the room. And what we typically do is, you know, the moderator will share bios. But I felt like this time, this is a really great opportunity to bring these voices into the room. So I'm just going to go around and have each one of the panelists introduce themselves, you know, say a little bit about who they are and then share one thing that they're grateful for today. So I'm going to start with Melody.
Okay. Well, hi. Thanks for inviting me to participate in the town hall. It's really exciting and it's been really exciting, fun watching you guys grow and do so many good things. So right now I am semi-retired. I'm not sure exactly what that word means, but I retired from my first big life. And I've just been like recreating what I wanted to do now. So I am an author, I'm a real estate broker, and I'm a board member on three different boards locally. So one of them I just recently found out about, I was just appointed to by a judge. So that's going to be a lot of fun. I would say right now I am just grateful for our freedom and after last night's storms, I'm grateful for everyone's safety also. So thank you for asking about that question too.
Great. Thank you so much, Melody. Nicole Cockerham.
Hello. So my name is Nicole Cockerham. I am an actress, writer, producer, creative, and I'm an entrepreneur. I've been in 150 commercials. I've nominated for Pulitzer Prize in 2016. And I currently have my own company called Stella Georgia, named after both my grandmothers. And my initiative is inclusivity and helping to assist communities that are supposed to be surviving and turn them into thriving. We really focus on extracurricular for kids and pretty much whatever I can dream of, I get to do. So nice to meet you all and I'm glad to be here. Thank you.
Thank you. So Graciela Mayvar.
Hi. Thank you, Thais, for inviting me to be part of this, the last year's panel. My name is Graciela Mayvar and I am today a coach, a diversity equity and inclusion consultant. Have over 19 years of experience in that field and it's my passion. I discovered that when I was appointed the first chief diversity officer at my former company. What am I, what am I grateful for? A lot of things, but I would say especially my two puppies. They bring so much joy to my life and I adore them. So if you hear a bark, forgive me.
Thank you. We'll invite them into the room, but you know, like I said, everyone's voice needs to be in the room. And Tina Robertson, welcome.
Thank you. I'm Tina Robertson. I'll start off by saying I am a sister to six siblings. And I say that because that was my first shaping as a leader. And all the things that we had to do together that my mom had us do and she was really creating little leaders. But I'm excited to be here tonight and appreciate Ethos every time they ask me to support something that they're doing. I am a licensed clinical social worker. I am a therapist, but I also have a role within my organization that allows me to serve my community. And so the thing that I'm most grateful for really is community. Because after, you know, going through what we've been through over the last two years and for some of us, challenges have been prior to those last two years of pandemic. It's so important to have a network and a community of support that you can link up with and really help push you through. So that's my moment of gratitude.
Thank you all so much. I really appreciate it. And I know that as I was kind of preparing for tonight and reading through the bios, I was, I was just so in awe of each of the paths that, that you all have taken to, you know, be here today. And as I said, you know, there are so many different paths to leadership. I know like each one of us probably, you know, kind of got to our ways, many, many different, many different ways. And you know, had, had opportunities, we stumbled along the way, you know, doors open, doors closed, all kinds of things. And so I think each one of our individual stories really will illustrate the, the different paths that take us to really dive into, you know, our identity, our purpose, our values, and just overall our vision for where we want to be. And I think as we continue on these paths, that the vision gets clearer. So with that, I would really love to give each one of you some time just to tell us, you know, the, the audience here about your path to leadership, you know, kind of where it started and, you know, just what your, what your, your journey was. I'm going to start with Nicole. You're okay with that?
Um, so I think for me, my path to leadership, because I had my first portion of life where I went to college and all of that great stuff, right? And then I even had my first portion of success with, you know, working in the industry and stuff. But I think my path to leadership really actually came for me as of recently, I'd say back in 2017. I broke my neck and so I have 12 screws, six bone plates, two spacers, and an artificial disc in my neck. And that's just like one of the things that transpired in the accident that I had. But what it actually did was it, it kind of tempered me and it sat me still. And it got me to focus and align myself and repurpose myself to things that I could connect to, that I could place real value on, right? I took a chance in just like reading all of the compliance and I reached out to certain sources and I was able to become sort of like a force without having to be a face in the room, which was a whole different thing because I'd been the face in the room for so long. It taught me how to lead from behind, you know, which is like everybody wants to be the captain of the ship. And for once, I really didn't want to do that. And I was able to bring in different pathways and communities to, to help them to, you know, recirculate the dollar in the community. I was able to enterprise the Merck Park, which is a large cultural area in Los Angeles by enterprise zoning it, bringing music back. And now it's just a thriving community where, you know, they don't have to attain like permits to be on the street. And then the community sees it and they get involved and it's a whole vendor thing. And so everything that I do is sort of tailored around what I see and how I can have direct impact. My company focuses on permits and logistics. And so what that does is brick and mortar buildups. So we are part of everything from We Rise to large public assembly events where we can gather communities and events and keep everybody safe. And I act as a conduit with a strategic partnership between Lawa and Miami, New York, Los Angeles, and several cities in order to pull off activations in communities that would normally not have anything. And for me, that inclusivity, it raises the value and the awareness of everybody that gets involved. And it, and it, and it brings in that spirit of what community means, which is the commune and to come together. And so I really focused on a lot of direct impact with that. And I think for me, anybody that's a part of it, because it's really just about kind of like evoking change in a way where it's really just a moment that I'm creating. And I have a lot of great strategic partnerships. And so I'm always bringing people in to like work with me and people that don't know and teaching and helping. And I think like, for me, that's like the pathway that started me. I think right now the, the largest project that we're having is this, we're doing a gym for 600 kids that was vacant and abatement since 2012. So to bring 600 kids in and let them have an opportunity to, you know, have access to programming and stuff like this is just exciting for me. And that, that to me is indicative of my leadership qualities.
That's awesome. I really love hearing that. And I love that you said commune, right? I mean, I think that's something is, you know, bringing people together and that just this vision and 600 kids, that's a huge impact, you know? I mean, that is something that, and you can't always say that, hey, I was able to create this opportunity for 600 kids and, and you know, in, in one swoop. I want to kind of go over to Melody because I know that Melody's story, she has an amazing story that I want you all to hear. And you know, tell us, Melody, like, you know, kind of what was your path to leadership?
Okay. Well, it's one that surprised me. I didn't know that that's what I was headed for. And I know I didn't say very much about that in, in my bio because that's just kind of what I'm doing now. But what I did was, you know, just such a joy to me that y'all might have to hold up a timeout when I start talking too much because I'm just so happy and I have so many good memories. So in the past, how, I guess, you know, in the beginning, I am from a family that was a long line on one side of cotton farmers, all the way back to, you know, just industrial age women in sweatshops in Chicago and, you know, going through all of that. So no one had gone to college before, no one even knew how, you know, where you start that. And I guess I'm not really sure why, me, but I had a voice that was just so deep inside of myself that I had to go to school and finish. So I was the first person to graduate from college. So that was a big thing and everybody cheered that on. And you know, had a lot of support from my family. They didn't know, they were like, I don't know how to help you, but you know, go for it. So that was good. And that helped me, you know, still really to keep moving forward. So when I went to college, and this is something I think is so important for young people to hear, is that sometimes we already know exactly what our path is and we work real hard for it. And then sometimes we don't know what we don't know and we just discover so much out there. And it's okay to just, you know, let life happen. Some of it just, you know, send you on your way. So I started school and I didn't know if I wanted to be a heart surgeon or a lawyer, but those sounded really interesting. So I went to the school as a pre-med, pre-law student. I didn't end up doing either one of those things exactly, especially nothing to do with heart surgery. So I went, I ended up just absolutely falling in love with history and government, political science, economics, you know, just what really made the world tick, that they really didn't talk about mention school when I went to school and in my high school program. And so I didn't know, I didn't know all these steps. So I just decided instead I wanted to be a teacher. I mean, that because the teachers, the professors that I had made such a big impact. And there was just, you know, my teachers didn't make history exciting. So why was it so exciting in college? So I thought, well, that's what I want to do. I want to make learning interesting and I want to make it real. And, you know, very, a very human experience, which it seemed to lack for me with my teachers in school in the past. I mean, there were some exceptions, some great, some great teachers that I had, don't get me wrong, but not for the most part. And so, you know, a lot of times we don't know why we're there, you know, when you're in school. You know, and I hear that from students all the time, like, why are we learning this? So I became a high school teacher and I, what I also didn't know was that I was best at reaching what some like to call at-risk students or people, the kids who are more troubled. And so the superintendent of the school in the high school brought me up from the junior high school and asked me to work with some gang kids because they had beaten up the coach from the year before, basically. And so they were like, we need somebody to go in there that'll, you know, take care of these kids. So I started teaching high school and absolutely love it. Teacher of the year multiple times and just really loved what I was doing. But I researched, I learned and I kept growing. And I think that's something that, you know, it's really important that you always have to do. And as I did, and as I became more aware of what my students really needed, not what they teach you in teaching college to get your certificate, but by interacting with kids, that my students came with things that most of the teachers weren't prepared to deal with or didn't care or didn't want to deal with. Frankly, frankly, that happened too. So as I began to grow more and more down that path and saw those, I kept talking to the administrators, the powers that be, look, if you would just do this, if you would let my students do cultural murals to celebrate who they are, if you would let them. And the answer was always, oh, we could never do that. We could never do that. You know, and the, all of the nuts and bolts of the big machine in huge public schools just was getting in their way of doing what they're supposed to do, which is teach kids, right? I mean, you guys have probably all experienced that in some way. So my personal life had taken me through an experience where by this time I had taught over 13 years. You know, and like I said, that was, I was well-loved and respected in my job. I was a teacher of teachers, a teacher trainer, a diversity trainer. I did all of that work and it worked my way up at the top, was in a really large district. And still was so frustrated at the kids whose needs weren't met. So I quit. I quit as a single mom with no income and absolutely no money and was determined to survive in school. So I did. And I asked the state, it was the first year of charter schools. So I guess you could call me a pioneer. No one had heard of it. No one knew what that was. And Texas was one of the first states in the country to have charter schools. So we were even way ahead of, which isn't, you know, always the case, but in this case, we were ahead of, you know, ahead of everybody really. And so I wrote for a grant from the state and I was granted the largest ever at-risk dropout recovery high school program in the state of Texas. So I was just like, okay. So I wasn't prepared for that. I didn't know how to run a business. All of a sudden I have millions of state dollars flowing through that have to be managed, lots of government regulations, things to do because people that own a charter schools, they're just kind of doing their own thing, but they're not. In fact, we were tied to more rules than the traditional school was. So I made my way through that and I started teaching people to stop thinking of our kids as at-risk, but at promise, the same way Michelangelo looked at the statue of David. That was a piece of marble that had been thrown away. And he chiseled and chiseled and chiseled. And by then he was well-to-do. I don't know if you guys have heard that story, but it's an important one. He chiseled away at this unwieldy piece of marble. And someone had asked him, because by then he could have asked for the, the best, highest quality that there was. And he asked, why? And he said, because he saw the angel within. And he worked and worked until that beautiful statue was created. And I just ask everybody to look at our youth today and for people to look at themselves like that more. And so after a really successful, joyous, lots of heartaches, you don't win it every single one, but over, I guess, close to 25,000 kids graduated so far under that program. So they were all at risk of dropping out of school. So I would say that was my really big success. I've written legislation and walked up and down the halls of the Capitol and had that legislation become law to protect and look at how we evaluate, not just our students, but our teachers and look at the successes and not the failures. Because my average student that came to me was 18 for their average age and the average reading level was third grade.
Yeah. Wow.
Passed the state test the very next week when they were being passed out and they had something else to do. And so I guess that was just like, you know, go ahead and, and take the challenge and do what people thought was the impossible is really, you know, the most possible. Just see the angel in everybody and look at the obstacles and whatever they do in it. But I would say the leadership part was probably the newest and the challenge, most challenging for me. I think you guys asked for us to talk at some point about, you know, the obstacles that get in our way. I'm pretty sure I was my biggest one. Well, you get, you know, you do have to like accept that and stumble through it and, and you know, there are lots of ways to talk about that later in the conversation.
Yeah. No, we definitely are going to talk about some of those obstacles. I want to, you know, hear from the other ladies, but I mean, just the fact that I love that reframe of at-promise. I mean, I think, you know, how do you frame something in a positive way and really, you know, help people to see things differently. And I, and I love that, you know, chisel that marble. Yeah, you do. You have to. So and 25,000 kids is, you know, not, not a small number. So thank you. Thank you, Melody. So Graciela, you know, tell me a little bit about your path to leadership.
My path to leadership, I'm going to go back to my childhood. I was born in Cuba and grew up under communist Cuba for, since birth until the age of almost 12. My parents decided to leave Cuba and for five years, we were treated as enemies of the state because we were leaving. And that really established sort of a routine in our house. Because every day we would go to school and get the lessons that the government wanted you to hear. And at night, my parents told us the, the benefits that we were going to enjoy by coming to live in the United States. So as a child, I remember already making decisions as to what was really our, our goal, what was really as a family, the objective. So arriving from Cuba, spent five days in Miami and we moved to Los Angeles, where I have, I have lived ever since. And that itself is, was a big lesson. Because in Miami or in Florida, I would have been one of many Cubans. But that was not the case in Los Angeles. I was the biggest Latino population was Mexican-American. And so yes, getting to know people from different cultures, and yes, every country in Latin America is different. So we cannot just say, oh, the Latins are the same. So that's a big lesson, appreciating people from how they are. I was the first also to go to college and it was thanks to a high school counselor who told me, you need, with your grades and your study habits, you're going to go to college and I'm going to help you get there. And so I got accepted to the University of Southern California and then received a scholarship. That led me to international relations and Alberto Political Science. Started working and then I decided within six months that I needed an MBA. Because I wanted to combine that international relations, but business savvy. And that's how I ended up at Mattel, where I spent 30 years. And I started as an analyst and I left as a vice president. And I think about the leadership that my parents taught us. We were coming to the United States because it was, we were going to have better opportunities. And it was up to us to take those opportunities and make them right for you. And so it helped along the way that when I got to Mattel, I met this other woman who was already a vice president, who was also a Cuban-American. So it was important for me to see the possibilities, to, to have a mentor, a role model that I could identify with. And so that's a little bit of my journey. There's a lot of details behind all of this. But when I got the role of diversity officer at Mattel, I really, for a minute, thought about it. And I said, I've been working all my life towards this role. I was in sales and marketing and I loved it. But my passion was when I got the role of CDO and the difference that I could make both internally and externally for the reputation of the company. So that's a little bit of my journey.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. And you know, I really appreciate just saying that you worked all your life to become this diversity leader. I mean, I think that, you know, diversity leaders today, I mean, we, it's been such a, it's a new role. I mean, it's been a role that's been, that's been around, but I really do believe it's, it's those experiences that helps you to be an even better leader in that space. And Tina, tell me a little bit about your leadership journey.
Yes. I mentioned earlier that it started out being in a family with seven kids. I'm actually a pastor's daughter, preacher's kid. And so my mother's goal for me in life was to marry a pastor, by the way. And so if I could really tag my, my journey would be, you know, if, this is so not what my mom wanted for me was a person. And that's okay, because I think that starts out with that your journey for your purpose and who you are by way of identity, which is what the legacy plan with Ethos is all about. It's, it's finding out who you are and what your purpose is and what your values are. So as much as I love and honor my parents, are. So as much as I love and honor my parents, I did not have the path in mind for me that they had for me. And that's okay. That's a good thing. Um, but with that said, I, we did so many things together as a family. My, my parents always told us that being a leader is about influence and that no matter what you do, that you are lead, as you represent your family, as you represent your community and represent your people. And so we all started out with that mindset in life, whether it was about, whether we got titles, uh, in our field, but it was really about who are we as individuals and how are we influencing in other individuals based upon our God-given purpose. And so that's really what drove me. So really just kind of the, the long and short, and I'll be really brief, but I went to, um, a small liberal arts college, a historically black college and university. I have to give them a shout out because we just turned 110 years old, um, Jarvis Christian College. So I was there. I was an undergrad, um, English political science major because I had planned to go into criminal law. And, um, I actually, um, took my LSAT, enrolled in law school, got accepted and decided that I didn't want to go because I was tired of being in school. I wanted to take a break. Fortunately, um, it worked out that because my path. And I had talked to a, a couple of mentors of mine that said, hey, what about the civil law side? I had worked at the criminal courts in Houston, uh, worked in the county jail, city jail and realized this is not my, my, my space. And so it was like, what about civil law? And so I started working at State Farm Insurance and I worked there for about nine years. And that's where I started kind of climbing the corporate ladder. But during that time, I was doing a lot of volunteering. I was working at my church and I was directing the youth ministry there. And so I was bit by the volunteer bug and, um, and at some point in time, I, I understood and knew that I needed to make a leap, uh, and really get into my profession by way of purpose and calling. And so I want to echo, um, what my sisters on the, on this, this panel have said, is that you don't always know right off. Your purpose, you discover it as you go. And you take these little steps along the way that help you build an understanding of who you are and what you're placed here to do. And that's what happened to me. So I had a little whisper about make the leap. So I, um, left Houston, I was there at the time, um, and I got my master's in social work. And I remember leaving corporate America and I had several coworkers who told me, why are you doing that? You're gonna starve. Nobody does social work. That's like, who, who does that? And so, uh, I just want to say for those who are listening, and especially for our young people, that you'll have naysayers along the way. And you need to be prepared for that. But you also need to be, um, so focused on what it is that you know you need to do and pursue that. So I came into the field of social work and just, you know, kind of as a, uh, initial start. I remember after I finished grad school, um, my first job offer was $23,000. And I remember saying, oh my God, my coworkers were right. I'm gonna starve. Why am I doing this? So I want to surface the fact that we can doubt ourselves on the path to leadership in, in different roles that we have. And just know that not every role is intended for you to have a leadership title. It's intended for the step to prepare for what is next, as long as you're influencing, you're leading. And so, um, I didn't take that job. I, I waited it out and got a little bit more money for my first job. But what happened was when I got into my first role, how I really started launching into leadership positions with titles of leadership was, um, the board chair, the first work that I, um, started with. She, she saw me. She saw me as a leader. She peered through all of the, the money, the position I had at the time. And she said, you need to support and I'm gonna do that. And she basically positioned me in, uh, to serve on boards before I was a case manager. And she had me serving on boards of other nonprofits, uh, where people really didn't respect that title. Um, but she saw something in me that I really didn't even see in myself at the time. And as of her and because of those roles within the community, I served on community coalitions. I was doing groundwork, knocking on doors, meeting people who were in leadership. And ultimately, um, I ended up interviewing for, uh, a role of executive director in a nonprofit. And so over the course of different positions, I have had roles that are, would be considered in nonprofit and C leader role. But those were really honestly positions for me to just learn. Um, I'm not really big on titles. Again, I truly believe that we get those positions and titles so we can have influence, so that we can bring other people along. So like Nicole said, that we can impact our community. And so that's what it's for. It's, it's not about position. It's about, uh, your purpose and getting permission from people to, um, to support them and to love on them and to push them towards their purpose, that they understand their values and goals. So that's really been my launch. I mean, there are little stops along the way, but for time's sake, I'd leave it there. I'm just grateful to have the opportunity to be in a seat where I get to help influence. And I'm being influenced every single day by every leader, by per, by people who don't have titles, they're leaders, people who don't have a voice at the table that I get to amplify their voice because they're leaders where they sit. And just because, um, I have the title, it's a blessing because, and God's given me that. So I can amplify those who don't have that seat. So I'm grateful, again, just to, to share this space with all these great leaders.
I know. Tina, like so many nuggets in there. Like I'm sitting here, I'm like, okay, where do I go? I mean, you know, purpose, identity. I love when you said, she saw me. Oh, that like kind of just because I think about sponsorship and, you know, for us as women, you know, what that looks like or doesn't look like, and where you see other people getting sponsored and, and maybe you, you aren't. And, you know, I know, like we were, I was gonna kind of go to the obstacle question, but you know, I, I want to talk really quickly just about imposter syndrome, because I kind of heard, you know, it's like you, there were each, at some point, we each had this, you know, moment of pause where, you know, we thought that, hey, you know, maybe this, I can't do this, or, you know, let, there's some hesitation, but you stepped out in faith. And I kind of know from each one of you, just really quickly, like, what was that moment where, you know, you experienced that and you stepped out on faith? Um, I don't know, I'm just gonna kind of throw out, who, who's ready to speak?
I remember moments, uh, when I'm meeting with the top executives at Mattel. And for a moment, I said, how did I get here? That little girl in the farm in Cuba, how did she get here? And to be honest with you, I like, I would question myself, do, do I really belong here? Yeah, with time, I said, of course I do belong. But there were moments earlier where I would even question, like, are they gonna find out the truth and then they're not going to include me? But anyway, that's a little of that syndrome.
Yeah.
Um, like she said, your seat and your title, you know, you never give up your seat. Your seat is your position of authority and, and your place of power. I mean, for me, I, I was very sort of uncertain. And I have, uh, uh, a right hand and a left hand. And there are two guys that I met at 16 when I first came to college at Northridge. And I wanted to take that leap of faith and, and do this like concert for West Adams Block Party, which was an event I created. And, um, you know, my brother was like, I got bail money for you because you're definitely going to be arrested for having a party in a particular area with all those people if this really happens. And, you know, I, I was, I was very blessed. I was able to call upon some people who were ready to, to come together and serve the community in a very, very sort of special way. Um, I think for me, when it was all said and done, my, uh, qualm with questioning who I was or what I had actually, you know, achieved was, you know, I, I wasn't looking for my name to be on a poster or anything like that. Um, and I, I met one, uh, person who's my mentor to this day, Deb Flynn, who at the time was the, uh, president, like the first black president of Los Angeles International Airways, right? And she was like, you did this? And I was like, wait, you're the lady who's the VP? And she was like, yeah, I was like, that's a job. Like who applies for that? That just seems like a whole lot of work. She was like, I'm gonna talk to you. And one thing that she said was, is everything that you do, if someone doesn't underwrite a contract with you, and even if you don't, you better initiate it yourself, right? And that is your way of respecting yourself and having them honor that too. You know, that becomes that onus. And, and I platformed that like, like immediately, right? And then, um, although I was like, no one even knows I really did this. The first thing that happened immediately after that was, is I got a partnership with Nike and then Jordan and Air Max. And sometimes you just have to put your head down and do the work and just trust in yourself and, and know that he's leading the way. And that's how that goes.
That's right. That's right. Love that. I love, love that. Any other moments?
I think we've all had that moment. You know, it's, it's just, it's a human thing, um, self-doubt and wondering, uh, whether or not you're capable or you're good enough. And I think we've all had some battle scars. I know I, I experienced a really traumatic thing at a young age. And, um, sometimes that, you know, kind of gives you a big hard knock in your self-esteem and you feel different from everybody else. And every now and then that'll creep up all your life. You know, it doesn't go away because it's part of who you are. You know, and I think as leaders and women or, or, you know, men for any, uh, just human, it's just part of the human journey. That when you, uh, just accept that person, that part of you are, that that was part of everything else that shaped you and you use that for yourself, instead of having that keep you down and say, well, yeah, I was that person, or I made this mistake in my life, or someone did that to me, or all of those other things that make you feel like you're not part of the pack, like you're different, or there's a mark on you, or maybe because you're a woman and not a man, or because you are one race and not another, or religion and not another, all these things that just go buzz around in your head that you listen to. You just have to quiet those voices and love exactly who you are and what happened. What happened, happened. You can't change that. That's back there. And I think you have to be here where you are right then. And, and then you too, it's just a, you know, you have to wake yourself up every now and then and say, well, you know, the first time I walked down the halls of a huge auditorium with the black robe on and all this stuff and walked down and looked behind me and there are, you know, 200 at-risk, at-promised kids with their cap and gown on in a huge auditorium with, uh, you know, thousands of people. And you get up on stage and look out and you have to talk to them. All of a sudden you have that little girl creeps up and goes, oh my word. And you move on, you know, you just press on because then you realize, oh, wait, I did that. You know, you just have to go, like you said, Graciela, you just have to be like, wait a minute, I am at this table. I do have this seat. I am the person at, at this stage, speaking to all these people with all the parents crying and happy, you know, because you look back and you just led all of those kids and all of those teachers and all of those people to one of the most important moments of their life. And you have to just, you know, go, okay, I did that.
Exactly. And it, it just, it feels good when you finally get to that point, right? When you realize and you, you step in and you embrace the fact that, that you did that, right? I, and claim it. I, I think it's, it's the most fulfilled, the most fulfilling feelings in, in, in life, right? I know that, I think like, you know, I, obviously not about me, but you know, just I know I had my own personal moment a couple of years ago where, you know, all of those doubts, that all of that imposter syndrome, like, you know, always trying to prove yourself, like, I don't know what it was. It just changed, maybe I'm getting older, right? You know, I'm getting old. So, I mean, it was just like, you know, I really embraced the fact that I am that, you know, and stepped into it. And, and I will tell you that it, you need to talk about influence. You talk about having the seed. It, it stepping into that leadership role, it, it, it carries a different weight and you carry yourself a little bit differently when you know that you're out there, you are leading and you are making an impact in the world and your purpose gets even bigger and the vision gets even bigger. And it's just an amazing thing to know that we, as women, are, are doing it, right? And, you know, and I know we have like about 10 minutes, but I do want to talk about this because, you know, as, as women in, in these leadership roles, you know, something that comes up a lot is that whole balance of, you know, career and personal life and, and your, your passions. And now I'm really curious, like, how do you balance all of that? Because I think that's a question when you're out there, leading, giving your everything. How do you find that balance and time for yourself? Tina, I'm gonna start with you.
Who's found that?
Good question.
You know, I think, you know, one of the things that is, um, has been helpful for me is, as I talk with my mentor, really just sit with the space of understanding rhythm and rest and knowing that there are seasons where, um, you know, you have to really focus in on certain themes or certain priorities. But how do I find the rhythm and the rest? I don't know if that's the same thing as balance, but if rest is missing, then rhythm is off. And that means I'm not as good for something else. And so I think it's about prioritizing, but not forgetting that you are part of that priority and creating that rhythm for yourself that includes the rest and, and being able to balance it that way and constantly reflecting to see, am I hitting the mark with that? Am I in a rhythm or am I feeling off kilter? And if I'm feeling off kilter, you know, our bodies are the best communicators to us. We just don't always listen to them. And so how do I get back in rhythm with my body? And how do I create those spaces of Sabbath and rest so that I can do this job effectively for a long time?
I love that. I'm writing that down. Rhythm and rest. I love it.
Can I just say something and add to that? Because that, you know, that hit such a chord, Tina, as soon as you said that, we don't, you know, we don't all find the balance. And I think if we just, you know, say, okay, give ourselves that break. It's the thing that I was excited about, um, when you brought up the topic, you know, when I saw that. Because just that morning, I, I watched the Supreme Court nominee hearing. And that, in her opening thing, that's exactly what she brought up. So if you have to hear that, this is a woman that's been nominated for the Supreme Court. I mean, what an honor that is. And she looked at her family and apologized for not always finding that balance and thanking them for their patience with her career. I mean, it, it is a thing that's out there. It made it to a Senate hearing just this week. So no matter who you are or how big your title is, I mean, my goodness, look at the one that, you know, she's up for. Um, or, you know, whatever your job is, whatever your walk is, we're all, it's, it's just important to hear that we're all, everybody struggles with that. Sometimes it's, you just can't do it. And you just say, okay, I can't. It's out of balance right now. It's over here. Or like you said, Tina, it's a season. And you just accept that and go through that season and wait for spring, you know, that's just, you just have to roll with it, don't you?
Yep. That definitely. Nicole, Graciela, what, yeah, how do you do it?
I think my checks and balances besides like really, really nice shoes, um, is to like dial in, really dial in with my family and make sure that their needs are met and that I'm supporting them and that always remembering that I'm in this space and this place so that I can take the time that I need. And those are needs that need to be met too, right? Because I don't want to be out here like, um, putting on my cape and, and saving the whole world. Meanwhile, back at the ranch, I got this one burning down and that happening, you know? So for me, my checks and balances come from making sure that the family is good. Um, my mom, my, my nieces, my nephews, making sure that they're getting through school, making sure that they're effectively communicating, making sure that their mental health and wealth is in check as well as mine. So when I'm working, I'm giving it probably 120, 30%. But believe you me, when I'm, when I'm not, I'm relaxed, I'm going twice as hard on that too. So, you know, um, it, 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 it just has to just balance itself out on its own and you'll figure it out, you know, in the end. Um, that's, that's, that's what I do. That's my go-to for myself, you know?
Awesome. I love that family. Graciela?
As an executive coach, I get a lot of questions about, hey, coach, help me find balance. Hey, coach, what is the recipe for balance? And there's no answer for that. Because balance is very individually, is individual. What's balanced for me might not be for Tina or Nicole. And so what I say is, what we allow sometimes to happen is for one side to take what we allow sometimes to happen is for one side to take over the other and they both suffer. So find that rhythm that is right for you. And at every, I would, I would put it in decades, in each decade of your life, different things matter more than the other. When you're in your twenties, where you're, your thirties, your forties, your fifties, sixties, you, you realize that the priorities shift. So you have to find your rhythm, like Tina said, find that rhythm that is, works for you.
That's right.
Period. And you have to learn to hear your body to, that's very important. Because if we neglect it, worse things happen later. So.
Agreed, agreed. And I, I heard this and, and well, at my, my company, we use work-life harmony. You know, because I don't, I do, I don't believe that there is balance. And I think it's something that's like unattainable. So I really was like, oh, okay, I like that harmony. And you figure out what works for you. And, you know, I love, Nicole, that you said that you, you know, go equal as hard when you're resting. I mean, that's me. Like I'm just like, you know, you check out. So I love the fact that each of us knows like what we need to do to re-energize and to, you know, I like, you know, kind of, you know, that rhythm and rest. I, I love, I love that. I know we only have about four minutes left. And you know, what's really important before we leave, I really want to hear like, you know, any advice, you know, just one, one word of advice that you would give to our next generation of female leaders. Nicole, going to start with you.
You know, I'll say this. Give yourself a break and give yourself a pass and know that there's no ticker tape running across your forehead for the experiences you've been through, just like you can't foresee what you will go through. But if you allow yourself that space to just be okay with each and everything and understand that your life belongs to you, that in itself becomes the most powerful thing that you can have to journey anybody, anywhere that decides to follow you, especially if you're doing it on something that, you know, it's like a dare to dream or, you know, you shouldn't be there because you absolutely should, especially if you shouldn't be, you know? So that's what this whole thing means to me. And I just want to say, you guys are all fantastic. Tina, Melody, Graciela, you guys are amazing. I'm, I'm going to get your numbers from Thais and each one of you and figure out something because you guys are amazing. And this, this was, I'm far appreciated. And thank you guys for having me.
Yeah, thank you so much, Nicole. Graciela, what's your, your word of advice?
You don't have to be perfect to be perfect. And I need that. Perfection is overrated. I still have a Cuban accent when I speak in English, in Spanish too. And I was made fun of that accent by executives one time. And then my blood pressure went up. I brought it down and I looked at them and I said, the reason that I have an accent is because I also, I am also fluent in Spanish. How many languages do you speak?
There you go.
So my accent was not perfect. However, I was perfect for the role that I had leading Latin America for Mattel.
There you go. That's right. Thank you, Graciela. Melody?
I have a hard time keeping things down to in a couple of words. You know, after you've taught school or you've been a trainer, you just have like a thousand things to say. So I would say, I keep hearing a common thread in the women here on this panel. And that is talking about like finding that mentor or listening. Just open your eyes, listen, don't be afraid because someone is going to pop in your life and ideas going to pop in your head. Something's going to happen that can change the world freely. And you just have to like be open to that. Just listen, be, be kind to yourself and, and keep moving forward. It's just a one step at a time thing, isn't it? That's one foot in front of the other. And really listen to what these just gorgeous spirited women on this panel I had to say today. I learned a lot and I'm probably the oldest one here.
Thank you, Melody. And Tina, last but not least, what are your words?
Yeah, so I would say, dream big, shoot big, but don't be too big to walk the steps to get there. So I always say, remember the Beatitudes. That's what was given to me. The Beatitudes are be teachable, be humble, be prepared, forget entitlement, do the work, be ready. So that's what I would share.
Thank you. Love that. Love that. Well, I know we are, are at time and I want to say thank you to this amazing panel. I knew like when I had talked to everyone, I was like, okay, this is going to be awesome. Read the bios and I am so grateful to have had the time and space with each one of you. Appreciate you. Keep doing the great, amazing work and lead, continue leading. Thank you so much. Thank you to everyone that's joined. Have an amazing rest of your day and we will connect again soon. Thank you.